Give me one second.
All right, I'll call our meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. First item on the agenda tonight is the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Muncell, would you lead us?
Yes. I'm going to stand up.
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Telling you, the next killer app for Zoom is someone that can figure out how to do asynchronous pledge of allegiance.
That was our best one yet.
That's right. Ms. Low, you call the roll.
Chairman Seema.
Here.
Mayor Dalton.
Here.
Mr. Bolazina.
I am here.
Mr. Malin Smith.
Here.
Ms. Miller.
She was here.
Ms. Modell.
Here.
Dr. O'Mel.
Here.
And Mr. White.
I think he's here. Mr. White?
His video fetus here, but.
American and present. I have Alderman Frauci and Mr. McKnight as absent, we have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from our December 16th, 2020 meeting. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Seconded by Mr. Malin Smith, thank you. Any discussion or amendments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion appears to carry unanimously. Okay, new business. Item number one tonight is a preliminary site development plan. A request has been made by Matt, is it Ruckel?
Perfect.
Perfect, great. Of total access urgent care applicant for approval of a preliminary site development plan for a medical clinic at 12151 Clayton Road in the Campus Office Zoning District, developed under the Service Revitalization zoning regulations. We will have a public hearing tonight. I now open the public hearing. Mr. Spencer, are there any exhibits?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the city would like to enter the following exhibits. One, the municipal code. Two, the comprehensive plan. Three, the development office file is amended from time to time, including staff report titled Agenda Item 1, Total Access Urgent Care Preliminary Site Development Plan 12151 Clayton Road. A preliminary site development plan titled Proposed Site Development Plans for TAUC Properties LLC dated 2/5/21, prepared by BFA Engineering Surveying, a mailing list, notice of public hearing, and notice of public hearing posted on the property and published in St. Louis County.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. I'll call for our presenter. Please give your name and address for the record.
I'm Dr. Matt Ruckel. Our address, John, what's our, what's the address for the, for the property?
This is 12151 Clayton Road, City of Town and Country.
So, thank you for having us this evening. We appreciate it. In fact, I'd like to celebrate, this is the first Zoom meeting with a city that I've ever been allowed to show my face. It's so cool. It's so innovative. It's so forward-thinking. I appreciate it. And, and we're excited to be here. Normally, you get hidden behind the black curtain and, and you only get unveiled if, if, if given permission. So, so it's kind of cool. All right, I prefer in person. It's even better. But Total Access Urgent Care is a growing urgent care facility in the greater St. Louis area. We were founded in 2008. I'm a board serve an emergency medicine physician and I decided that patients deserve better. So, if, if all of you could raise your hand if you enjoy going to the emergency department. All right, I'll take that. No. That's zero for not. Nobody likes going to the emergency department. I'm an ER doc. I love going to the emergency department, but patients hate, and they hate it for four reasons. The reasons they hate it is because it costs too much. It takes too long. It's too complicated and nobody's nice to you. So, so therefore, we should revolutionize it and, and create a new solution. We, we are in a patient, sorry, we are in a service industry and, and, and the medicine is really good at serving the doctor. We, we cater to the doctor, we schedule to the doctor. We, we, we have lunch breaks around the doctor. Everything is coordinated around the doctor. I'm a doctor. I, I love when people care about me and do things that are catered to me. But, but the service industry actually means that we should do everything centered around patients, not the doctor. So, totalized this urgent care was born on the idea that we can provide fast, friendly, affordable healthcare to all communities in America. And, and every community wants one, just like they want a grocery store, just like they want a bank, they want a total access urgent care. Because we provide almost all of the services of the emergency department for one-tenth the cost, for 10 times the speed and 100 times the customer service. And, and if you ask any doctor in any organization if they provide great customer service, they'll all say yes. I, I am proof, I have evidence that that is wrong. We, we need to do better in healthcare. We need to do better in, in providing service and care to our families, from moms to our kids, to our loved ones. And, and total access urgent care is, is here to deliver that exact goal. We, we want to exceed patient expectations 100% of the time. If we ever have a patient complaint, I call them. We call them. We address it seriously. We resolve it to the patient satisfaction and we do everything we can to make it a phenomenal experience for everyone at home. I feel like I'm on Shark Tank. Is there anyone, is there anyone who's willing to invest? All right, I'll stop there and I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to, to discuss this. John Shabam, our, our engineer, has submitted the site plan. He is prepared to, to kind of present a, a short overview of, of our site. We're excited to, to have the opportunity to officially be at the crossroads in town and country. And this is a great location. We've been, we've been looking, looking and trying to secure this location for a long time. I'm told that it's known as the Christmas Tree Lot or the Ameren Power Truck Lot. So, we're, we're looking to change that. We're looking to improve it. We're looking to make it beautiful, make it a center of, of the town. And, and after John presents the short presentation for the site plan, I'd be happy to answer any question.
Mr. Chairman. Good evening. This is John Shabam with BFA. We are the civil engineers on the project.
Just state your address for the record.
John Shabam with BFA, 103 Elm Street, Washington, Missouri.
Thank you.
So, I'll try and keep it brief. We've been open for questions or any comments or concerns that you guys have. First off, I want to point out that we are zoned campus office, which our medical office is zoned correctly for that use. This falls within the Service Revitalization Overway District. And that's what we're here tonight for, is to utilize that overlay district. And I think it's a perfect use and I'm, I'm impressed by the way it's set up here. And I think it's a great use for our development. So, what, what the Service Revitalization District over gives us is it gives us the ability to be a little more creative. If you know what our lot looks like, we have a cemetery with burial rights in the northeast quadrant of the property. So, that's a big hindrance on our property. We have 11 feet of fall or grade elevation change from the northwest corner of the site to the southeast corner of the site. And then we're cornered by Ballast Road and Clayton Road. In 2017, St. Louis County came in and took additional right-of-way, making the property even smaller. Our plans that have been submitted to your city reflect the updated right-of-way. So, we have a lot of constraints on this development and we're trying to make the most out of it. The existing site or the previous use of the site was a fuel station. It had four access points, two on Ballast Road, two on Clayton Road. Our proposed improvements significantly improve access along Ballast Road and Clayton Road. The former use had two access points that were severely close to the intersection. And, and our, our use and our goal is to remove those access points, push our access as far as possible away from the intersection to make it safer for customers coming into and out of the site. Once again, we're, we're happy to be here. This is a, a good site for us and I, I think we can make the most out of this site. And we, we appreciate you guys, one, having the forthcoming with the Service Revitalization option to, to make something like this possible. And happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the commission discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mayor Dalton.
Yeah, good evening, gentlemen. Dr. Ruckel, thank you for being with us tonight and I appreciate your team participating as well. We are very glad you're interested in our community. You, you said something, doctor, in your presentation that you want to make this the center of our town. Those words are fairly significant to town and country. Can you describe that further from your thinking?
Sorry, sorry, I, I didn't mean to misrepresent myself. I, I don't want to make this the center of the town. I understand that this is an important crossroad in, in the town.
Well, that's a dramatically different statement, so I'm glad you clarified that. Thank you.
Yeah, we, we're proud to be a, a member. We're not looking to reshape or redo anything. We're, we're adding to, we're, we're looking to add to a, a fantastic community. And my son goes to school in town and country, so I, I, I visit it daily.
Well, that's wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Are there questions or discussion? Mr. Bolazina.
Yeah, I guess I'll start out with some of the tougher things. There is no traffic study and I understand that you submitted a traffic study on a facility from Washington, Missouri, which I understand. And the, the statement in the original presentation indicates that we're better off because it used to be a gas station. Well, it's not a gas station anymore, it's a vacant lot. And we had a proposal on this parcel in 2015 or 16, something like that. And there was a traffic study as part of that submission. The submission was not approved, obviously, and the project was not built. But the information that was in that traffic study, which was prepared by the engineers that did your Washington, Missouri traffic study, was that there's, most of the roads bordering this site have a D or E or F rating in their existing condition, you know, before the improvements that were proposed by the previous applicant. So, we have an intersection already that is a problem. And I understand that there were discussions with St. Louis County about road improvements at this intersection, but somehow those negotiations have failed due to a lack of ability to obtain additional right-of-way from the northwest properties at a reasonable sum. So, I would like, I guess, the applicant, Mr. Shabam, to further give us some information on why they believe that this is not a problem, this building will not create a problem for this intersection, and whether there are any mitigating factors that are going to be offered to help what is already a D, E, and F kind of intersection.
Mr. Shabam?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, I appreciate the comment. And, and yes, we, we did submit that traffic study based on Washington. We, we weren't sure of the exact questions that, that were going to be posed to us. So, we felt the, the study from Washington kind of gave the trip generation. And that's kind of the point I'm going to drive home tonight is the, the amount of trips generated by this use of medical office or total access urgent care are significantly less than, than any other use that could go on this property. So, especially compared to a, a fuel station, which, which will drop that. Your, your comment is very reasonable. Yes, the, the lot was formerly a fuel station and it operated as such, which is a high, high motor vehicle intense use, which would generate substantial traffic and substantial trips. That was six years ago at least, based on Google Earth images. So, so we can, we can move past that, but I, I want to make sure that's, that's understood and recognized that, that the former use was very intensive. Now, moving forward, as you guys look to develop this property, you have to ask yourself what kind of uses could possibly go on this. Anything that would be retail oriented at all is going to be at least double the trip generation of what our proposed use is. Our, our proposed use is a, is a very traffic-friendly use. I mean, we're, we're talking about peak periods from nine to 10 in the morning, most likely, and peak periods maybe around six or seven in the evenings. That's, that's kind of outside of your peak hours of main traffic. So, so our use is going to wind itself more generously to the surrounding neighborhood in, in, as such. And hopefully, that's kind of what the Washington traffic study would have, would have portrayed. And that's what I was trying to get across by utilizing that.
And we're, and we're ready, we're, we're ready, willing and prepared to submit a traffic study based on this lot. We just felt like we needed more information to give them more questions to answer from you in order to, to generate the, the most effective report possible.
I'm not sure I'm inclined to make you go through that exercise. I mean, I think the trip generation study from the Washington facility does demonstrate something that can be referred to what would happen to this intersection. But in the prior report that was prepared for this site, they, there were some troubling things. And I understand these are going to impact anybody that wants to develop this site. And I just don't know if there are solutions, but I am looking for solutions. And that is the fact that at peak times, you go in one way or the other, that the traffic backs up at this intersection. And if you have a client or a customer or patient that wants to enter the site, they are blocked from doing so at certain times of the day because they can't make a left turn from Clayton into your site or they can't make a left turn from Ballast into the site because there's cars that are queued up for the stoplight. So, I understand that you place the egress and entrance as far away from the intersection as possible. But is there any other mitigating factors that you can suggest that would not cause confusion if someone's trying to enter the site during a peak AM or PM time?
I could ask my architect to, to, to shepherd the cars in and, in and out. He, he does many things for us and I'm sure he'd be willing to, to do this as well. Sorry, I'm clearly joking. But, 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 but we're, we're open to any ideas that you have. We, we, we want to be good neighbors. We want to be good for the community. We, we actually think, like, like John said, we're a perfect use for this location. It's kind of the medical center of St. Louis. We, we do not do high volume. We, we do very, very short visits. You know, the average, the average visit, 85% of our patients are in and out in less than 60 minutes. So, it's low volume and it's, and it's, I'm sure visits, there's not a lot of car traffic in and out of the property. We, we think that, that it'll be very well handled. And the fact that it's on two roads, it gives patients easy access to get in and out of the site as opposed to being logged in. It just one, one access very close to an intersection.
Well, I was hoping for suggestions, so I'll make some suggestions and see whether they resonate. Would you be open to certain restrictions by the St., by the, well, it'd be St. Louis County and the city of town and country to either a no-left turn or no-whatever turn at certain times of the day when these queues are actually blocking the intersection to prohibit people from using that turn mechanism to get into the site during those periods when cars are really just stacked up, waiting for the stoplight?
My most hated word in life is the word no. So, I, I'll try to answer your question without saying no. We're, we're open to lots of ideas, but, but limiting in egress and, and in and out of the property, I think, I think makes the, makes the problem worse. It doesn't make the problem any better. I, the fact, the fact that there's traffic and that, that there are cars that are stopped at the light, you know, the people in town and country are very courteous, very kind, very welcoming people. And, and I've actually, I've actually had lots of times where I'm coming in and out of that gas station on the daddy corner. And, and there's no reason why anyone should make room for me or, or, or make a space or make a hole or let me in to the, the traffic aisle. And they do, every single time. There's never, there's never a situation where, where, where it's difficult getting in or out, even, even though there's traffic.
And, and I will add on that the, once again, the benefit of this use is that we're only talking about maybe one or two vehicles tops during the peak hour that are making this, that get the stalled movement, that catch the light wrong and catch the, catch the light wrong and have to wait to be allowed. And, and, because I mean, the majority of the time, you're, you're not always going to catch the light wrong. And, and as you pointed out, you, you did pick up on the fact that with the access points being furthest away from the intersection, I mean, we're giving everyone their best chance to get into the site and, and making it most reasonable possible.
Well, probably the more difficult one would be the eastbound Clayton Road during a time that the traffic is backed up at the stoplight, both in the going forward lane and then the wanting to go left on Ballast Lane, which would then stop a car in the traffic lane trying to go east. And I just think that's not something that we want to have happen. And I would just want to discourage that, either with prohibitions or signage during those peak hours and force that person to keep going, turn around and come in the other way if they have.
The more difficult one is, is the other way from coming south on Ballast. You can't turn, you can't turn left. You go around the, through the lights, you can't turn left again. If you're coming east on Clayton, you simply turn left, go north on Ballast and then you turn into the slot. So, that's it. But the other way from, as I said, from north to, north Ballast is going to be very difficult at traffic heavy, heavy times. Either entrance.
Alderman Frauci.
I had to unmute myself. So, this kind of reminds me of the traffic issue that we have on the other end of Clayton Road down by Lamp and Lantern Shopping Center. And I, I can't remember if it was MODOT or the county who came in and actually put in those prohibitions on those turns during certain times because of the number of accidents that occurred when cars were trying to make the left turn into the Lamp and Lantern Shopping Center. And it, it, I think it actually has a little bit more room between that entrance and the light than this does, although it's a little hard to tell, you know, when you're just looking at plans. But it is a real concern and I, I remind you that we don't own Ballast Road. So, those prohibitions may come regardless. You know, I mean, town and country has Clayton Road, but Ballast is not ours. And those restrictions were put into place at the other end of Clayton Road, not by us, but, but by either county or MODOT based on the number of accidents that occurred because of that type of turn.
I, I would, I would suggest and, and just offer a, a request, which is, we don't want any special treatment. We just want to be treated the same as all the other three corners of this intersection.
Well, I guess my response to that is that they've been there a long time and things change and traffic changes and everything changes and we have to deal with today and not have a project that's going to make things worse. And if we can improve on that, we should try to do that. I don't think.
But remember, remember, we, we take care of moms with blue babies that are dying. We take care of, of kids with asthma attacks that can't breathe. We take care of people who are having heart attacks. And, and when they need to get to our site, I would prefer that they run over the curb and, and, and run over a small tree and get to us in, in the very few seconds that they have in order to save their life than, than to be escorted down further down the road, have to do a U-turn, come back, wait in a line of traffic. And, and, and you've lost your moment to, to make a difference in, in a family that will be affected forever. We, we're, we, we provide emergency level services and, and, and we really do take care. I mean, it's not, it, it's not, you know, heroin is one of these things in America that is real. And, and you know, these teenagers sometimes get dropped off blue and, and we have to breathe for them in order to, to save their lives. So, I, I think, I think limiting access to a medical facility does, does have some, some real medical downsides.
Mr. McKnight and then Alderman Frauci. You're muted, Will.
And really, as I looked at this plan, there were two issues that came up to me that stood out. And I, I guess I, I see Commissioner Bolazina's issue with the turning in problem. To be honest with you, the one that stands out to me more than that is the, the left turn out onto Ballast, going into an existing turn lane across an active northbound Ballast Road lane. And I'm concerned at that point because I know that turn lane fills up and we're going to have traffic blocking potentially there. So, I guess the concern I have really in this drawing is that I, I'm not seeing, you know, and if I were to have any limitations, I would say maybe make that a right-only turn space to make it so that you can't turn into that left-hand turn or make a left-hand turn out of there. And again, this comes down to traffic coming off the interstate, trying to flow onto Clayton Road, and then traffic coming down Ballast and blocking that during peak times. I don't know that that's going to happen a lot, but I think that that would be something that would be a, a possible remedy for some of the issues. I'm not sure that I see, I mean, I, I do see the issues of people turning in, but I, I don't see multiple lanes being crossed. I'm not sure that I, I see that as a huge issue in that space. I guess you could, would see that in Clayton to some degree, but it's far enough away from the light that I don't know that's a problem. The other question I had for you that really kind of stood out to me is this building is positioned up next to the traffic, up next to the road. And I think when I first saw it, I was seeing five feet from the road is what I thought I saw, but it looks like it's five feet from the property line. Can you give me a, a, a definition of how far this is away from the road base itself, away from the road itself? The building on both the Clayton side and the Ballast side?
Yeah, absolutely. On the, on the Clayton side, we are 20 feet away from the roadway at the closest point. I, I justify the closest point is kind of where we have the five-foot dimension at.
Okay.
And that, then that's 17 feet from the curb. Going to the Ballast side, we are 30 feet from the road or 28 feet from the curb.
So, if in the future we wanted to put a sidewalk in there or something, there's plenty of room in there to work with. I guess, I was seeing five feet and it's like, that's pretty tight to the road. But you're saying it's 20 feet from the road and 30 feet from the. I guess, I was seeing five feet and it's like, that's pretty tight to the road, but you're saying it's twenty feet from the road and thirty feet from the other road.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Alderman Frouchy.
Hello, am I off? Okay, there we go. I think I lost me it now. So, um, Commissioner Bolzina, I don't know if it would, um, help, but, and Commissioner McKnight said it a little bit. I, I mean, I was looking at this and thinking right in, right out. Um, and just take away that option for the left in turn. The reality is, I mean, you, you could throw a rock and hit the Missouri Baptist Hospital from here. So if somebody really has a blue baby, I think they're probably going to the emergency room there, um, given that you're literally a stone's throw. Um, but I do think that there are going to be some problems with, with the traffic. And I noticed in the, just to pick up on what Commissioner McKnight was saying, in the proposed conditions, there is under H a sidewalk that would be added. A five-foot sidewalk from along the property line from Ballast Road, point of access to the Clayton Road, point of access. So I assume that would be added to these plans? I don't know who wants the answer, if that would be added to the plan.
And, and again, again, if, if, if the city is going to restrict our access, um, you should restrict the access of all of the three quarters. I mean, that, that, that essentially, that essentially would, would, um, would severely impact our operations and potentially kill, kill the project.
Mr. Mellon Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Dr. Brockle, let me see if I can offer perhaps an alternative to, uh, address Commissioner Bolazina's concern. Um, and as background, I, I was part of this body when the previous applicant applied and traffic was indeed a, a major issue with them. So I'm not surprised that it's front and center now with us. But one of the other issues with the previous applicant was hours of operation. And while that applicant's hours were much broader than yours and judged to be intrusive to the residents nearby, is there perhaps a solution to be considered that would restrict your hours of operation at least in the morning? So that you, and just as a thought, began your operation at nine o'clock instead of eight, which would avoid the majority of the rush traffic in the AM. I don't have a comparable solution for the afternoon, but traffic is indeed an issue at this corner. We're all aware of that. And possibly one way to mitigate it at least partially and, and more effectively in the morning i- is that suggestion. So I have some other issues that I want to raise, but let me at least allow you to respond to that thought, Doctor.
Sure. Uh, thank, thank you for your question. Thank you for your suggestion. I appreciate it. I, I have a, a, um, a, a counter proposal to your proposal, which is, um, I will host a party, um, starting at seven forty-five in the morning, ending at eight fifteen in the evening. And all of you can come and join me. I'll serve food and drinks all day long and you can see for yourselves that this is not going to be an issue. We, we, we are a fraction of the volume of a gas station, a fraction of the volume of a Tim Hortons, a fraction of the volume of a large, uh, medical office building, a fraction of the volume of a large, um, you know, general, general office building. We, we are tiny footprint, tiny facility, tiny number of cars, uh, two or three cars per hour. I mean, i- it's essentially nothing. And it makes the lot beautiful. And we will celebrate our, our, um, our cemetery, um, on our lot. We'll, we'll, we'll put a nice, beautiful fence up to give the, the, um, people resting in the cemetery privacy. Um, we'll beautify the lot. We'll put lots of grass and greenery and trees. Um, and, and I, I mean, I, I, I think this is a great use. I, I, I don't see any other business surviving this, um, this kind of panel uh, unless you expect them to run a business with no cars. Maybe a bike shop with only bike visits.
Well, Doctor, I'm sure that this proposal would be a far improvement over what we have now. And I've studied the landscaping plans and so i- it, that, that they are complete. Let me turn my attention to another matter. And, and, because it doesn't seem that the, i- i- if traffic is an issue, I don't see an immediate apparent solution. Let me ask a different question. One of the things that I've always wanted to ask about any business coming to town is what does it do for the city to make Town and Country a better place? Does it provide a service that's not now available? Or does it add, uh, beautification? Or is it potentially a significant revenue generator? And so I'm aware of the total access facility that we have on the south side of our city. In fact, I've been a patient there. So I, I know you're already present in Town and Country, so help me with the question of what's in it for Town and Country?
Well, how many of you have been a patient of Total Access Urgent Care? Um, can you help, help, help rate your experience? Help tell me about, was it, was it, was it awful, poor, good or, or excellent?
Since I'm the one that asked the question, I'll answer first, but I'd welcome my colleagues. My experience was positive and it's, it coincides with your introductory remarks.
Fantastic. And, and if you ever have an experience, other than that, I want you to call me personally on my cell phone and I will handle it immediately.
So it, it, uh, Mr. Chairman, i- i- if you want to direct others to answer Dr. Brockle's question, go ahead, but I want to come back to my question.
And let's, let's, uh, let's keep the discussion on the, uh, the project. Mr. Mellon Smith, please continue.
Thank you.
Well, the, the question was about value, but what value do we bring to Town and Country? I believe, you know, I personally have been a patient. I've been patient at, at hospitals. I've been patient at, at ERs. I've had loved ones that are, that are patients at hospitals, patients at ERs. And, and it's not a good experience. It's not nice. It's not fun. It's not, it's not short. It, it's very painful. And, and if you go there at, at nine o'clock at night, there's a good chance you might see the sunrise in the emergency department. So I actually believe that we are raising the bar of healthcare in St. Louis. And I believe that the citizens of Town and Country, um, deserve this service as much as anyone in any other, um, town do. And, and we, we aim to please and we want to do a great job for the community. That, that's a value proposition that we bring. We bring a beautiful building. We bring new construction. We bring beautiful greenery. Um, we're, we're improving, um, you know, everyone's allergic to, to asphalt and hard surfaces these days. W- we're, we're returning that to the earth and we're, and we're providing a beautiful green lot. We, you know, like this is an amazing project. I'm excited about it. I want all of you to be excited about it. And, and I, and, and I wish we could have started talking about how, how many of you are excited with all the issues and how many great things you love about it, um, as opposed to just talking about the negatives.
Mr. Mellon Smith, would you like to continue?
Yeah, I, I, Dr. Brockle, I, I, as I said, your plans improve the appearance of that corner. So then the three matters that I raised, the aesthetic one, you can say it's an improvement. But if I travel six minutes in the opposite direction, I'm already at one of your facilities.
I don't think it's six minutes. Um, I think it's more like twelve minutes, but, but, uh, you know, I, I hear your point. There, there, there are people that, that can say, um, that we shouldn't be in one neighborhood or another. I, I think this is a corner, um, that, that, that's deserving of an urgent care. And I, I think that we, um, we're, we're excited to have this opportunity, uh, to build a, a, a brand new location at this urgent care. Um, I mean, if I lived, i- if I lived around this site, I wouldn't want to go down to Manchester at Gettysburg to, to get my care. I, I, I'd want to get care in my neighborhood, just like I go to the grocery store in my neighborhood or the bank in my neighborhood.
Let, Mr. Chairman, one last question, and this is much more, uh, simple. There's two different sizes that, uh, this building will occupy. The memo says it's fifty-one thirty-seven square feet and the material from FSA, the architect shows it at forty-six sixteen. I'm just curious which size it is.
Mike, can you weigh in? Or John? Mike, you're on mute.
Okay, got it. Uh, uh, I'm sorry. What was that question again, sir?
What's the square footage of the building?
The FSA, which is, uh, FEELR, S Architects, yeah, indicates the building is forty-six hundred and sixteen square feet. And the documents from the city indicate that it's fifty-one thirty-seven or a difference of about six hundred square feet. And I'm just curious, which is the accurate number?
Now, I'm pretty curious too. If I could double check that for you. It should not, the total outside of the building is at, um, I believe five thousand fifty square feet. Uh, you are allowed to remove out to double check if the walls and any, and there are certain parts of the building that can be removed. Uh, based, are you talking about parking counts?
No. I'm talking about the square feet of the building. And
I believe the state document. Yeah, I believe the difference comes in at the, the five thousand one thirty-seven, that's gross floor area. That's the total square footage of the building. The number in the FSA document, that's the usable square footage as in the, the build out area of the building. So, so inside the building, there would be, there are going to be a couple of rooms that are saved as shelf space and will be built out at a later time. So that's the difference in the square footage. On the outside, day one, you're going to see a five thousand square foot building. But on the inside, we're going to have some areas, they're obviously going to be finished, but they're not going to be, uh, not going to have decor and equipment in them.
All right. Is the, the ultimate size of the building obviously impacts the green space. And I was wondering.
Yes, so you use the five thousand number for that.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Back to you.
Ms. Lo.
Um, before we go any further, I just wanted to note for the record, the public comments that we've received in regards. Um, I've received a total of eight emails, um, totaling ten pages. Um, they were submitted by Frank Patricia Murphy, Robert Drake, uh, Bill Bouchon, uh, Denise Blatch. Uh, Bob Watson submitted two emails and Barry Blatch submitted two emails. They should have been distributed to the members before.
Thank you. Yes, we did have an opportunity to review those. I'd also note for the record that, uh, we did have the opportunity for members of the public to, uh, actually speak, uh, this evening and we did not have any, uh, apply for that. Mr. McKnight.
Mr. Chairman, I did want to speak one, about one of the points that did come up in the message and it, it came back to the question, one of the original questions or the original question I asked about distance from the road. And I, and I'd just like the, I guess the architect in this case to, to, to give, um, his opinion as far as the road, the, the building being up next to the road as opposed to being set back and having the parking lot in front. Um, do, do you see any issues with traffic visualization coming around that corner? It seems to me like thirty feet back on one side and twenty feet back on the other is going to give a lot of space to see around that corners are coming, but I'd just like you to talk and, and to give your, a- as you drew it up, did you take that into account as far as whether we'd be blocking any visualization around that, around those corners?
And Mike, this is John. I'll take that. Uh, so yes, we did, we did take that into consideration and, and that's a good point to bring up. However, with this being a signalized intersection, that, that significantly reduces the impact of something being in, in your site triangle. Um, and as you pointed out, and, and as we discussed with the, with the realization of the actual distances from the building to the roadway, visibility should not be an issue. There's, there's no turn movements at this intersection that will be impacted by the building. If you're making a right-hand turn from Clayton to go north on Ballast, um, you're, you're looking to the left, not towards our building. And if you're making any other movements, you're looking at the signal, not our building. A great point.
And because the shape of the lot as the cemetery in- infringes on the, on the property, um, the, the building can't be placed any other way with workable parking, um, to access both roads.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Alderman Frouchy.
Well, I have a couple of questions and a couple of completely different subjects. The first is that in looking at your, um, your plans, I don't see any of your signage. And I'm wondering if your plan is to have similar signage to your location at Manchester Meadows?
I will have the
blue.
Well, the signage allowed by the city of Town and Country. The sign package, the sign package will be submitted and we'll, we'll, we'll take the signage that's allowed by the city.
Okay. And then, uh, the other question that I had was about, um, your anticipated EMS use. So I've, for the last six years, served as the alderman for Ward Two, um, and Manchester Meadows is in my ward. And I also had the pleasure for two years of serving as the chairman of our Police Fire and EMS Commission, where we reviewed staff quite, you know, well, basically monthly at our meetings regarding EMS use. And, um, there was a tremendous jump in Ward Two's, um, EMS use after your facility was, was built at Manchester Meadows. And the location that you're looking at, at the far end of Ward One, um, i- is an area where we've had a lot of discussions about response times. And so, um, I noticed in your, in the memo that we got, it says you, uh, expect to generate point six-three uh, ambulance trips per day. I'm not sure. I guess that's half a person going, but, um, but essentially, you know, we are seeing a lot of increases, um, from your facility in Manchester Meadows. So I'd like for you to talk a little bit about, um, what you, what you expect from this facility.
Sure. Yeah. First of all, I'd love to see your data. Um, I think data, data tells a lot of stories. So.
So it comes from Central County Dispatch, so you can, um, you can request it from them at any time.
Yeah, no, we'd love to see it. If you want to send it to me, that, that'd be great. Um, but, but our company as a whole, um, we send two point nine percent of our patients to the hospital, two point nine. So, um, if you go to the hospital, you, with, from us, in general, you go to the hospital for surgery now or to be admitted to the hospital now. Um, so, um, if you take, take all of our, all of our locations, you know, um, two, two point nine patients out of, out of a hundred patients, um, are going to the hospital. So, you know, this, this office will probably see, you know, a, two patients an hour, twenty-four patients. And so, um, you're probably going to have most days where you don't ever have a ambulance patient. Um, when it gets up to a hundred patients, you know, you're going to have two patients that go to the hospital by, by ambulance. Oh, sorry, but they go to the hospital and, and half of those that go to the hospital, um, go by car. So, you know, if you come in, if you come in and you have bad cellulitis and you need to be admitted because you're diabetic, you go by car. If you, if you have appendicitis, um, and you're, you're medically stable, you go by car. Um, you know, if you, if you fall down and hit your head and you have a head bleed, you're going to go by ambulance. If you're having a heart attack or, or acute COPD exacerbation or, or an acute asthma attack where you need supplemental oxygen or breathing treatments along the way, you go by ambulance. And the fact that the hospitals are so close to us, most patients will probably elect to go by vehicle, private vehicle as opposed to going by ambulance because it's going to be so quick and so easy to, to transfer them over. And most people will probably feel very comfortable if you, if you're transporting your spouse or your child, as, as long as they have stable vital signs, putting them in the car and driving them across the street to the hospital. So I, again, I, I don't see ambulances being an issue at this location. Um, um, we, we have an incredibly low ambulance rate and, and we're, we're very thoughtful. And again, we're, we're not open late at night. We close at eight PM, so we're not going to affect people sleeping or, um, trying, trying to be home, um, having, having a quiet neighbor.
Mr. Chairman.
Eric Dalton.
Well, thank you, Doctor. That's, that's interesting and you, and you have, uh, helped me quantify myself in one of your exceptions. I left a, um, I left a, um, Town and Country at the, along Clayton Road and visited your, your Mason and Manchester facility uh, and had a very good experience. Your, uh, your, your staff there is, uh, was, was, uh, uh, treating, treating me very well and, um, and then encouraged me to travel by ambulance to Missouri Baptist Hospital, which I declined. Uh, so they, they, uh, but I was one of those two-point-nine percent, I guess, that needed to go from your facility to, to the hospital via ambulance. And I, I took your advice informally as I drove myself. But they suggested that that, um, was not the best way to proceed. But be that as it may, um, I want to give you and your team an opportunity to drill down further into one of the findings that this commission has to make tonight. And one of the findings we have to make, uh, is that this facility is conducive to the proper development of the city. And, and I was struck by your comments that, uh, this is the best location for, um, for your, uh, facility. And I need to ask a very simple question in that respect, and that question is why? Because you indicated that you don't think that people should have to travel, leave their neighborhood like I did and travel to Mason and Manchester like I did, uh, which I found very convenient and very productive. Um, and I was comforted by the fact that you were there. Total Access Urgent Care was at the intersection of Mason and Clayton. And it was easy to get to, and I was well-served and well-taken care of there and, um, and had a very good outcome. But the put, you, you indicated that they want, people want to stay in their neighborhoods. Well, we have a lot of neighborhoods in Town and Country. And I certainly don't expect Total Access Urgent Care to be in every one of our neighborhoods. So how did you pick this neighborhood? And tell me why is, it is in the best and most conducive and proper development of the city of Town and Country that, that you locate there? And, and I think this is, what I'm trying to do is help you help yourself because this is one of the findings this commission must make to approve your project. And, and thus far, I haven't heard anything that has been, uh, convincing in that regard, other than, um, for you to express the conclusory statements that it is the best possible location. So with that, I, I look forward to your remarks.
Sure, um, I, I appreciate that, Mayor. And, and I'm sorry you got sick and, and I, um, hope you got better quickly and, and sorry to go through that, that, that's, uh, that's no good. Um, I'm glad you had a good experience. Um, in, in my opinion, Clayton Ballast, Clayton and Ballast is a major intersection um, and a, and a major crossroads in the center of Town and Country. It, and our model is to be at Main and Main in the center of a large neighborhood. Um, so we want to be close to the rooftops. We want to be easily available to the homes, to the schools, to the churches. Um, and, and we want, we want to, um, be very easy, very accessible. Um, we, we, we do have many locations and, and, and you have the right to go to many of our locations. Um, but, but, but it's, it's really cool to have an opportunity to be in, in what, what I see is, as Town and Country, close, close to these, close to these hospitals as, as the medical hub. So, um, you know, I think it's a great, I think it's a great intersection. I think it's a great location. And, uh, you know, I, I'm, I'm excited to be here. Um, we, uh, we, we, we do look forward to it.
Let me follow up, Chairman, if, if, with your permission.
Please.
Uh, so, so that, that's good. Um, and, and it helps me a little bit that you want to be at Main and Main in, um, the neighborhoods throughout our community. What I'm trying to get my head wrapped around, and again, I think it's important that you have the opportunity to express this to this commission, is why is this in the best interest of Town and Country? I, Commissioner Malinsmith asked that question, and I'm not sure I understood the answer he got. Um, but that we, we need to make a finding tonight on your behalf that, uh, this project is conducive to the proper development of our city, not your business interests, but rather the proper development of our city. And, um, and, and so I'd, I'd really appreciate your remarks in that respect.
Yeah, I, I can't think of a better use for this corner. I mean, you, you, can you give me some ideas as to better uses that, that provide better services? Um, with, with, um, better, better customer service, better, um, friend, friendly, um, uh, accessories to, to the neighbors. We're, we're, we're low volume, we're low noise. Um, we have, we have nice-looking buildings, we provide an extremely valuable service. There's not anyone in America who doesn't need healthcare. Um, we, we, uh, we, we really do deliver a great service. And, and I think we're a perfect use for this corner. I mean, a gas station on this corner, um, a, a Starbucks on this corner, a, um, retail in this corner. And there, there, there's nothing on this corner that's going to work better than, than what we have. Um, we, we, we think we're a great use for it.
Thank you, sir.
Further discussion? Dr. Mel?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, um, with your permission, I'd like to ask a few questions about, uh, what goes on inside the building. Uh, would this be appropriate for a, uh, preliminary site development? We've discussed services.
Uh, sure, keep it, keep it brief as you would, but go ahead.
Well, um, so, Doctor, just a, a few questions, I'll try to keep it brief. Uh, do you, the, uh, does your, uh, facility accept Medicare and Medicaid? Or, or people that don't have any insurance?
Yeah, we, we take care of patients, um, of, of all kinds. Um, we absolutely are, are, um, accept Medicare. Uh, we take care of Medicaid patients, but we do not accept Medicaid a, as a, as a payer itself. Um, we have, uh, one of the best rates for either uninsured patients or underinsured patients. Um, and, and the cost is approximately one-tenth of that of the emergency department. So if you go to the emergency department and you get a CAT scan of your head, it's going to cost, um, between two and three thousand dollars just for the CAT scan. Your total visit will probably be, um, you know, three, four, or five thousand dollars. A CAT scan of your head at our facility is two hundred dollars. Um, so it's, it's literally one-tenth of the cost of the ER. And that's been validated by both Anthem and Cigna as payers. And we do, we are a network and, and do accept all, all major payers.
Uh, and I, I, I'm not sure about the high end of those, but you're certainly cheaper. And I, and, and I would agree, it, it's a good alternative to the emergency room as long as it's not, uh, a long list of emergencies that can occur and require a hospital. But just, I'm just trying to get a feel of the acceptability. And I understand, as you know, that, uh, all these facilities must accept everybody and make them stable, and then they can send them on to the hospital. But is there a percent of, uh, the patients that are sent to collection? Is it a high, low, medium?
The, the majority of our, of our patients that have trouble paying their bill are, are not sent to collections. The majority are, are, are put on a payment plan. And, and we very aggressively work with patients in order to be very flexible, um, and cater to the patient's ability to pay. Um, there are some patients who, who don't pay their bill, who, who have a job, who don't answer their phone, who don't return their, um, calls, who, who, who don't pay, pay after receiving several invoices. And unfortunately, we do have to send some patients to collection.
As, as, as do all the hospitals. Uh, the CT that you're going to have, is that a new CT or a used one?
It's refurbished.
And the technologists are, uh, have been trained in X-rays and CT? Or have some certification?
A hundred percent.
The, uh, who reads those studies?
We have board-certified radiologists, uh, from a company called Altavista.
So that's, uh, just done like a, uh,
It's telemedicine. It's telemedicine. We send them the images electronically and, and they read the study. And, and within thirty minutes of having the study performed, they send us a, a, a dictated type, uh, beautiful report.
The physicians that staff the, uh, facility, did you, you said you had three? Are those physicians or what, what is their training?
Uh, we use a combination of providers. Uh, we have MDs, DOs, NPs and PAs.
Is there always either a DO or MD there?
Uh, no, we, we use a, uh, we use APPs, Advanced Practice Providers, which are NPs and PAs. Um, and, and MDs and DOs, um, interchangeably. They're, they're of all, of all of our twenty-six offices, any, any one given day, there's, there's physicians probably at half of them and, um, and APPs at the other end.
So it could be a, a, a whole twelve hours where there was no physician there?
That is correct.
Um, do the physicians in general follow the guidelines for when to X-ray and particularly when to do CTs?
A hundred percent.
Uh, obviously, all these places have their complaints and many times the people that have a good experience, uh, don't, don't put it up on the internet, so I understand that.
But, but if you, if you go to our websites, you know, we have, we have tens of thousands of patients that post reviews. They post first name, last name, they write entire paragraphs about us. And, and, uh, and the ones that are happy are very happy. And the ones that are not happy, I, I call and I address their problems and I fix it very quickly.
So complaints of excessive X-rays or unneeded CTs, uh, certainly you would reject those complaints.
It's not that I would reject them, I would accept them, um, I would accept them and I would analyze them. So for instance, um, I had a pediatrician call me, a, and this was many years ago. And he told me, I never want you to do another CAT scan on one of my patients. And I said, well, can you tell me about what's going on? And he said, sure. And, and he said, um, you know, there's a patient you did a CAT scan on. It was actually me as the doctor. I took care of the patient. Um, it was a twelve-year-old boy with classic signs of appendicitis. And, and I did a CAT scan on, on this kid. And, um, and it was negative, luckily, he didn't have appendicitis. And, and the doctor said, you know, there are many of these cases, um, and, and I don't want you ever to do a CAT scan again. I go, no problem. Send me, send me all of the cases that you have that you're concerned about, and, and I will gladly address each one. And I, I, I will work, work with you, um, to understand, um, what, what, what happened here. And you know how many cases he had?
Well, I understand the indication for appendicitis.
He had one, he had one patient. He had one patient of his that had ever had a CAT scan at my office. And so I, I commonly find, um, that when somebody says the data proves otherwise, when you ask for the data, it doesn't prove otherwise.
I know you've been doing a lot of COVID tests, which are great. Could you tell me, are you using the antigen test or the molecular test?
Uh, we preferentially use the molecular tests. Uh, the molecular tests are more accurate, um, and, and better. Um, the, there, there are both, uh, rapid tests available now, both rapid antibody and rapid antigen tests. Um, both are available, both are good, the, the antibody is better.
Dr. Mel, I, I'm afraid we're, we're maybe a little in the, in the weeds here. And I, I imagine your questions are targeted at determining whether this is something that is beneficial to the city.
Well, I'm just looking into the interest of the citizens of Town and Country. But that's why I asked your permission. I do have a question about the public art exam, uh, example. What? I, I'm not clear as to what's, what that's going to be. I, I obviously know it's not decided, but what is the, what are their choices?
I see Mr. Spencer has his hand. Mr. Spencer, would you like to answer that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, that condition was placed in by staff. The, uh, site is an internal gateway as, um, as specified by the comprehensive plan. And public art is a important element of any internal gateway. So staff wanted to make sure that there was a reserved area. If at some point in the future, the city decides, um, that it wants to implement public art, we have a location. And if we can, and, uh, find an agreement with the property owner, that would be, uh, a location for public art to be installed. But there is no, no plan for public art at that location at this time.
So, Doctor, you've reviewed the conditions set out by staff. Uh, are they acceptable?
I, I don't have the conditions in front of me. I'd be happy to go, go through them one by one and, and I, and I could tell you. I mean, I, I kind of like the idea of public art, but to tell you the truth, um, it, it's never been discussed with me. No, no one's ever, ever approached me or called me, uh, to discuss it. So, you know, again, we're, we're open to any and all ideas, but, but, but I would appreciate a call from whoever's suggesting or recommending, um, these initiatives.
Just to have one more comment, if you'll permit me, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Uh, I, I think that not permitting a left-hand turn out of the Ballast uh, exit and leaving the facility, I would say ninety-eight percent, ninety-nine percent of people leaving is not an emergency. And so I, I don't see a, a really good reason to permit somebody to try to make a left turn into that, uh, traffic exiting there. I understand your arguments on, on coming into the facility, but I think that, that right there would, would help somewhat.
But how about the gas station? How, how about the medical office building? How about the other office building? Are, are we saying that, that you can't make a left turn out of the gas station anymore?
Well, we're, we're not looking at the gas station right now, so we would have to see. But I, I can sense that maybe, uh, during some hours, that would be, uh, a hindrance.
But shouldn't, shouldn't the rules of business and the rules of the community apply to everyone equally and not, not have us single out, um, uh, diff, different people for, for, you know, var, various reasons?
We, we're responsible for the welfare and safety of our citizens. So each case is a separate, uh, example. And it's just from my reviewing, uh, from my viewing that. And, uh, and I, and I'm in agreement that there's not going to be that much traffic, uh, generated from a, uh, an urgent care center. I'm very familiar with urgent care centers. And, uh, I, I just, I'm wondering if, if that during certain time periods, that wouldn't be beneficial to, uh, to the city. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sluse?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I, I think we lost Laura and I'm guessing, uh, Ryan's gone to check him out since she's taken this. Maybe we can take a quick second.
Yeah, why don't we take just a moment?
What happened?
Well, we lost, uh, we lost Laura, maybe Ryan. There we go.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Spencer?
Uh, yeah, Laura, Laura was logged off for some reason, so she's logging back on.
Okay, yeah, we're, we were, uh, taking a brief pause while we wait for her to come back.
Okay.
Technical difficulties.
She's connecting to audio. All right. Ms. Lo, are you back? Can you hear us?
Yes, I don't know what happened. I'm trying to make sure that our YouTube, uh, stream is still going, so, uh, bear with me for a minute.
It, it says so, upper left.
It looks like it is.
We are still live, so.
Feel good?
Uh, yes, uh, okay. Sorry for my freakout.
All right, I wanted to, uh, um, Doctor, I did want to take just a moment and, and, uh, comment on your, your, uh, your point. I think that, uh, yeah, it, it is important for us to treat everyone the same. And I can assure you that if any one of those other property owners were in front of us today, we would be having the same discussions. You know, I'm not sure the ages of those buildings, but they, my guess is some of them were here before Town and Country was. Um, but if we had the opportunity to look at them today. Um, but if we had the opportunity to look at them today, we would most certainly be asking the same question. Mr. McKnight?
Quick, uh, a couple of quick questions. Um, it looks to me, and I just, I want to be clear on this. You obviously have done research um, to ensure that this is a good property to to have for you. And it looks to me like you will be the owner of this building when it's done. Um, I guess the the question I'm getting into is it, what is the likelihood of a project like this going south and what what uses if something has gone bad about one of these properties, have these properties been used for in the future? I'm not saying there's going to be a problem, but I'm saying if you were to build this property and if it didn't generate the business that you needed, what would you see this possibly being used for in the future?
I mean, it, I I I I think there are many, many uses that that it could be used for. Um, yeah, I think the most difficult, um, the most difficult constraint would be of finding a a use that the city would approve, it sounds like to be the the case, as opposed to finding a uh, a a good, good um, use for the building.
And to be clear, you're you're actually, you're going to be the owner of this building. It won't be a commercial building. It'll be, you'll be leasing. It'll be something that you will own and run yourself. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Alderman Frauci.
Chairman, I'd like to make the recommendation that we continue this to our uh, March meeting. It sounds like the applicant may want to spend some time reading the twelve proposed conditions that staff has recommended and um,
I've seen all the conditions. There's no reason to continue it. They asked me if I was in agreement with all the conditions. I'm I'm happy.
You suggested that you had not heard of the public art condition, which is.
No, I didn't say that. I said, no one is, I said, no one has called me about it. No one has directly contacted me the 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 owner of the property about putting public art on my property. I didn't say I hadn't ever heard about it. I said I had never been contacted directly about it.
I I remain, I I think we should continue this to our March meeting so that we have an opportunity to look through this a little more.
Were you uh, do that? I I would like to um, close the public hearing. I don't think we, Ms. Law, we received any additional public uh, comments?
Um, while we've been on the Zoom call, we have received some uh, from people watching on YouTube. Um, I don't, you know, probably wouldn't be pertinent to send that to you right now. Um.
Our Mr. Uh, Mr. Slus, so should we leave the hearing open then? Until we can hear those comments, what's appropriate?
Yeah, I I think either way, or you can um, you could add them, you know, you could close the public hearing and then obviously that would be part of the record as well, which would then give you a chance for everyone to review that this matter is continued, certainly.
Okay, so those will be, those will be added to the record. We'll have a chance to review them and we can close the public hearing. Thank you. All right. Well, I I now declare the uh, public hearing closed. All right, Alderman Frauci.
Make a motion to continue to our March meeting, which I think is this seventeenth, which is the same as today.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Manesman.
Thank you. I very much concur with Alderman Frauci that this matter should be continued. Um, and Dr. Bruckel, um, I I'm disappointed, I guess, with your response to Alderman Frauci. I too interpreted your earlier comment that the proposed conditions were unknown to you.
That's true.
Now, now you're saying, no, I'm familiar with all of them. I just didn't get a courtesy phone call from someone to discuss the matter of the public art.
Not not true. I've seen the, I've seen the letter from the staff. I've read the emails from the staff. I I I I've gone over the the each of the items with the staff, the the items that are pertinent to the engineer, the items that are pertinent to the architect. I I don't have the letter in front of me. I don't have all of the list in front of me. Um, and and it is true that that it, the public art was put on this project without anyone contacting me, asking me about it, talking to me about it, suggesting it as an idea. It was just put on a a list of of recommendations. So I I I do, I do believe that this um, this meeting is is negative. I do believe that 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 there is over overwhelming negativity um, in in all the questions that are being asked. I I
Well, sir.
I'm just here to, I'm just here to help. I'm here to run a business. I'm here to do a good job. Um, I'm happy to answer any all questions you have. I'm not perfect, but but we, but we want to please and we want to build a good building and run a good business. That's all.
Sir, on one of your points, I think we're in violent agreement and that we too are wanting to do a good job. And so I will tell you, I take exception to the claim that there is overt or excessive negativity. It's our responsibility as members of this commission to understand the matter to its fullest. But I'm going to offer another reason why this meeting or matter should be continued. That is, I have not had the chance to acquaint myself with the resident input. That was provided to us uh, late afternoon. And I've not read it. And if there is additional resident input, I think it's imperative that we as a commission have the benefit of understanding what our residents and neighbors are telling us. So for those two reasons, I would concur with the motion to continue.
Can Mr. Manesman? Further discussion? Mr. Bolzino?
I'm not uh, in opposition to considering the motion to continue, but I would like an opportunity to discuss some any other points that this commission might have that could be addressed in a future meeting, because I don't think we've gotten all of our points flushed out yet. And I I have some, and I think there my others might have some questions that we might want some response to that could occur if if and when the uh, hearing is postponed and continued.
I think it would be good to uh, to discuss those. If you've got a particular direction or questions that you'd want to see.
Well, we have a motion on the table, unfortunately, and I don't know where I can jump in or what I can do, you know, at this point.
This is the time for.
This is discussion, so I think this is a perfect time to.
Okay, all right. Um, so uh, we're kind of getting back to the conditions and I think some of our some of our impressions may have been uh, obtained by looking at other facilities. And uh, there is a notation in by staff, for instance, that the two monument signs that would be, that are located on the site plan are to be externally illuminated only. Now, this is a departure from what I've seen at other facilities where they have digital signs. And we don't like digital signs in town and country, so.
We don't have digital.
Okay, so the question is, you know, are you in agreement with that staff recommendation? That the monument signs would be externally illuminated only and not internally and not digital?
Well, we don't, we we don't have digital signs. You're, I think you're referring to L E D boards.
Yes.
We we don't have L E D boards. Um, so we 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 do have a, we do have a sign and and the sign is um, a usually a backlit sign um, that that's just standard in the signage um, industry. And uh, you know, it's it's, we're we're happy to to provide provide that uh, documentation and pictures of 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 our signage.
Well, I think this gets back to what Commissioner Mylan Smith referred to is that there are words in the information that we've been given having to do with an external illuminated sign. And you're telling us your standard is an internally illuminated sign. And so we're confused whether you're agreeing to the recommendations of staff.
I've never seen an externally illuminated sign. I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Mr. Spencer?
If I could help clear this up, we have sign regulations that apply to this property, and that's what will be the worst. And what's always been enforced at that intersection is externally illuminated signs via separate lights like gooseneck lights or so forth. So no internally illuminated lights are allowed at that intersection. Um, they'll have to be, you know, gooseneck lights or spotlights or something that shines directly on the side. That's that's.
Perfect, perfect. No problem. We're we're happy to, we're happy to follow the sign code.
Mr. Bolzino, did you have uh, other items?
Oh, yeah. So uh, the other recommendation, and we had a varied response, I believe, from the engineer having to do with the sidewalk. And staff has recommended a five-foot sidewalk at the perimeter of the property adjacent to the roadways. And I think the engineer response was that, why should we put a sidewalk? Because it's not going anywhere. And the intersection doesn't have appropriate crosswalks. My response to that is that we need to improve this intersection. And, you know, if we have to work in cooperation with St. Louis County and Town and Country to get some striping, we need to make sure that we're coordinated with this project so that people can walk across the street uh, at this intersection and that this this project not impede that ability for people to continue through this intersection. So the question is, is the applicant opposed to installing a five-foot sidewalk around this property?
I'm 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 not opposed to installing a five-foot sidewalk, uh, but but I do think it should be in coordination um, with with a continuation of a sidewalk as opposed to just a sidewalk on our property and and you walk down the sidewalk and 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 it turns into grass and there's no, there's no continuation of of the sidewalk. So yeah, I love sidewalks. I I love walking. I love, I I love pedestrians and and I I do think that um, sidewalks make it easier for pedestrians to get around the streets. And and so a coordinated sidewalk plan um, with with the roads department, um, St. Louis County, I I think is 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 a great idea.
Well, uh, I mean, sidewalks sometimes have to start somewhere with someone. And we've had this situation before in in many places and jurisdictions to where there may not be a sidewalk where this one ends. But we hope that in the future that it does happen because development continues and life continues with developing other properties. So the simple question is, do you agree to put a five-foot sidewalk around your property adjacent to the street?
Um, Ryan, can you comment? Isn't there an easement for a sidewalk there?
I'm not sure about an easement. I know the St. Louis County ha- is going to, has weighed in on this in water stand late today. They're going to require a sidewalk along Ballast Road and then an escrow for Clayton Road um, and and also for signal improvements. And, you know, staff's going to be um, recommending to the for Alderman and planning of the commission that we follow, St. Louis County's um, recommendations for this intersection.
There, there, there we go. It's, it sounds like a done issue, Dennis.
Well, it will be a condition to your application. So I just want you to know that.
No, I I I have no prob, I have no problem with a coordinated approach where where, you know, all the legislative bodies decide what they want and 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 we get it done. I mean, it like sidewalks are good for neighborhoods.
I, and to Dennis's point, I I could, I understand where he's coming from. I I myself put the condition in there. Stat, this continue is actually a good thing to give staff uh, more time to coordinate with St. Louis County on a uniform response. And March seventeenth, I think we'll have a very straightforward answer for how a sidewalk and how pedestrian improvements that intersection will take place and what total access is a role will be as part of that, because they're one quadrant of four quadrants. So um, I think uh, the continuous actually helps us. We can nail that down.
All right. So we've talked about uh, the the art. I think we've talked about the sidewalk and Mr. White, I'm gonna call on you next. And if you could uh, keep your comments. We're trying to uh, to help the applicant and staff understand what they need to have pulled together for the Bart seventeenth meeting.
Uh, I don't think, I think, I think I still have the floor and I'd like to continue.
All right, Mr. Bolzino, if you have more, please continue.
And this is for the civil engineer, I believe. And I think, I think you mentioned in your initial presentation that the site presented some difficulties, one of which was an eleven-foot drop from one corner to the other. And and we realized that because in the prior development, actually, in order to have a level building site, uh, the prior applicant built a retaining wall uh, uh, near the intersection in order to get that flat side and to not have a severe slope or other conditions at that corner. The site plan that I'm looking at appears to show that the southeast corner of the building really does stick out of the ground if you follow the contour lines as compared to the floor elevation. And so the question would be, or the the uh, ask would be that if we're going to continue this uh, hearing, that we get some further information and verification from the civil engineer uh, of what's going on actually with this site, because the renderings do not seem to coordinate with the topographical map. So that would be just some additional information to answer some of our questions.
Bolzino? Mr. White?
Um, briefly back onto the sidewalk issue. Um, remind everyone, um, um, particularly staff, we have in the twenty-year plan, not a sidewalk, but a trail going north, south on the on Ballast. Would we not be making sure we've got an easement at least to be able to um, fulfill that objective? But that's all I need to say on sidewalk. Um, it's not really in my eyes a sidewalk we're looking for. It's a trail. And secondly, if we're going into a continuance, I would certainly like to see a traffic study on this particular corner with this particular facility and not one on a facility which is thirty miles.
Thank you, Mr. White. Mr. McKnight?
Uh, Chairman, uh, we were talking about things to consider for next time, and I I think the applicant, I I I think there might have been some confusion in the seriousness that we were considering this. Um, and just as an explanation to the applicant, this corner has had significant review in the past and a number of issues that we've had to deal with in the past. And so this commission is very um, diligent in rec, trying to recognize issues, especially specifically around traffic and impact on traffic. So if you hear us focused on that and you take that as a negative, it's not really meant as a negative. It's meant as a, this is a heads up to you as the applicant that we're looking to you to help solve, not solve a problem necessarily, but not make the problem worse with what you're doing. And so it may sound like we're being negative about the proposal. I think what you're hearing us being is is really trying to consider options and ways to mitigate any impact that you'd have to the traffic in that corner. And so with the extra time, I would hope that you could potentially come back with options for us to think about or mechanisms to 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 consider or certainly a reassurance that this would not make traffic at that corner worse, because that is a big issue for our, for the citizens of town and country. And so that would be something I'd like you to take away and to and to do some additional consideration on before you come back to the board. And that's all for me.
I mean, I I I think the, I think the proof here is is standing on the property and watching the traffic. We 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 can sit out there in lawn chairs and watch the, watch the cars come and go and 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 film film them and and see if it, if it's a problem or not. If it's a problem and we have a thousand patients, like a Starbucks drive-through, um, then that's an issue. And and if we, if we have. And, and if we, if we have, you know, 24 patients in a, in a 12-hour period that, that doesn't create any additional issues with the, with the traffic, it's not an issue. And I, I, I don't think that focusing on the details is a negative. I, I love the details. I'm an emergency medicine physician. I, 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 I am saturated with details, but, but it, but it's the, um, it's not the, it's not the focus on the details that, that I sense as a negative.
Alderman Fratzi, did you have your hand up?
No, I don't.
Mr. White?
With respect, um, I think sitting on the corner eating donuts for 12 hours is not the way to do a traffic study.
We'll, we'll do a traffic study. That's fine. We're, we're happy to do a traffic study.
Thank you.
Ms. Munzel?
Um, Chairman Sima, um, I would, I don't know, um, if I need to ask Ryan or Tiffany or, or maybe the applicant, but I would also be interested in seeing the data from the other location in terms of the emergency vehicles. Just to get an idea because obviously just echoing the concerns of that intersection. Um, so I don't know.
Put it out there. We can bring that up next time. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else for the discussion? Mr. Bolzina?
Uh, yes, I keep going back to these conditions and making sure that we're all on the same wavelength. Uh, you did mention the fence and there was a fence mentioned in staff report that it would be a solid fence. We would like some information about the material and height and, you know, what it's going to look like and things like that. So.
I think it's just a, I think it's just a very nice, clean-looking, six-foot, solid vinyl fence with, with vertical planks. Is that correct?
That is accurate.
Okay, but I'm glad to hear that. Uh, but we haven't had the opportunity to see it in a submission form and to make some kind of recommendation, yea or nay, that's, that's great. And it may be perfectly great, but again, it's not information that's been confirmed by you as the applicant. It's only something that's in the staff report.
I, I believe it's us that suggested the solid six-foot fence. I, I believe a, a cross-hatched fence was suggested previously. So we're, we're happy to, we're happy to put any fence there. We're, we, we, we do, we do like the look of the six-foot vinyl solid plank fence and, and we're open, we're open to any, any, any input on what, what specifically you would like to see in the fence.
Well, we'd just like to see what you're proposing and it wasn't apparent in the application other than perhaps the height. We didn't see materials. We usually see an elevation or sample or something like that of what it's going to look like.
We're happy to give you anything you want.
Well, just show us what you're proposing.
Further discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Bolzina?
The, uh, the drawings indicate, uh, a large number of light fixtures that are mounted on the face of the building at the corner. And the, it looks like from the photometrics that they're putting out a great deal of light. Brighter than the parking lot. And so the question is, do you really need these things? Uh, are they really necessary for you to illuminate the building in that fashion? And secondly, would you agree to hours of operation of those lights and perhaps reducing the number of lights to a level that's not, uh, looking like Times Square?
I can address the first part of that question. The photometric definitely shows the extreme of those lights. If you have the, have the elevations of the building, there are canopies that protrude out from the building. Those are wall packs that are going to go underneath those canopies and point straight down. So, um, it's to cast the light straight down onto the sidewalk or the surrounding building, kind of giving it, it a better look. The photometrics take the absolute worst case of that as in it protrudes light. And, and I don't think that's the, that's the exact case. That's what's going to happen. Um, and then I'll let Dr. Bruckel address the second part of the question.
Well, before we get there, I mean, the, the elevations that we've been giving do not show the locations of those lights. So that would have been helpful to know where those lights are on the building. And, uh, we just recently passed a lighting code for residential purposes. And we know that people like to light up their houses these days. And we opted for lighting systems that actually were ground-oriented so that if you want to light up your facade, you do it from the ground and not from the top. So, uh, so anyway, those are just other thoughts that are kind of rambling around of, of whether these lights and the number of lights and what they're doing and what the end effect of that, those lights are going to be on this, on this building. So yes, go ahead and answer.
And, uh, Ryan, can you help, can you help us? It, it, doesn't the city have a code that pertains to this? And, and the, the city, the city tells us what, what's required and requested as far as lighting, the lighting profile for the, for the property?
Correct. Um, the, the parking lot lights, the height is regulated. I made comments that those heights be reduced. They were. We also have regulations about the foot candles at the property line. And they are in compliance with that per code, the, the foot candles at the property line, which is what we measure.
Well, this is something different. I mean, I know we have regulations having to do with lighting the parking, parking lots for safety and not lighting a parking lot to the extent that we want to have spillover on our neighbors. But this is a different issue. This is an issue of whether we think it's a good idea for this city to have a building like this at what's been called a gateway, according to our comprehensive plan, that's lit up like Times Square. And that's the impression I got from the photometrics and the, and the number of light fixtures that were at least shown on these preliminary plans. So if you can get us more comfortable with what kind of lighting you actually intend here and whether those lights are fully shielded in a way that's not going to have overspill to people that are in cars at this intersection trying to negotiate turns one way or another. So it's very important to me what kind of lighting is intended for this facade at this intersection. And I'm not, don't have a clear understanding at this point.
We, we do have those details and truly share them with them.
And just to reiterate on this, on this call, that, uh, there is no spillover into the property line as, as mentioned by Ryan with the photometrics.
Further discussion? Okay, we have a motion to continue. Ms. Law, will you call the roll?
Mr. McKnight?
Yes.
Mr. Malin Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Sima?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Munzel?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Alderman Fratzi?
Aye.
Dr. O'Mill?
You're muted, Dr. O'Mill.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Bolzina?
Yes.
And Mayor Dalton?
Aye.
Uh, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. See Dr. Bruckel? Um, okay, uh, next on our agenda tonight, other business, uh, 2021 work plan discussion. Mr. Spencer?
Thank, thank, thank you all. I appreciate it. Have a good year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to provide a, an overview of last, uh, this previous year, 2020 and, and just a few thoughts on the work program for 2021. I thought we accomplished a great deal given the circumstances. Uh, the fact that we're still meeting by Zoom is, you know, um, shows that it's still present. But, you know, in 10 meetings, we, we, uh, addressed the code in a number of substantive ways. We looked at some really large projects. We even adopted the comprehensive plan that came up tonight, even though it really seems like that was a lifetime ago. But I just wanted to give you guys, uh, you know, a pat on the back for that because, uh, you know, I, I thought we were really productive given all the circumstances. And I think this kind of, my summary kind of lays it out. Um, and I also wanted to really show how we're trying to address the comprehensive plan, um, in, in terms of achieving objectives. And when it comes to this year, I, I'd like our major, um, work product, our internal work product to, to work towards achieving, um, comprehensive plan objectives. And one of those being parking, we just, uh, addressed signage, um, natural resources in recent past. I think parking is a really big section of our code that hasn't been addressed in 30 years. There's a lot of changes, um, in terms of how parking is regulated. I think that's a, a really, um, a good section to tackle, um, this year. And I've been working diligently to, to, to create a document that you all can review at some point, hopefully in the, the second, uh, quarter of this year, I'm thinking. And that will go towards achieving several objectives in the comp plan, uh, which speak to, um, addressing parking and, and, uh, and reining it in a bit in terms of new development to promote green space. Also, uh, staff would like to address children's playhouses. They've been coming up more and more often. I think there's some, um, work to be done there. And, um, you know, when that point in time comes, I'm open to suggestions of how the, uh, or the best way to address those, uh, playhouses would be. I'm also going to investigate the merits of a historic preservation plan, listing of potential historic properties. And, and having something on file with our, with our city. It's something that, um, I think is overdue and we should, uh, pursue. And then in general, I'm working on how-to guides for the general public. Um, we've been creating those, um, you know, several every month and they're going up with a website to help demystify the, the code and process and all of that. So those are some major, um, internal projects, um, that staff is working on. And I kind of wanted to have this discussion too. Just is there something that, that this commission would really like to investigate this year and, and, uh, potentially address?
Mr. Bolzina?
Yeah, uh, Ryan, I really congratulate you on giving us, number one, this summary, something we've never had before, which I think is very, very informative. So I, I think that was a, a great exercise, both for you to know what you've done over the year and for us to kind of appreciate, you know, what we've done along the way. And I think it's, uh, it's fabulous to have this as a, as a regular practice every year. As far as the work plan, I think, uh, yes, I think our parking standards, I think there's a lot of things that need to be, you know, uh, rethought and maybe put in places that are easier to grasp because we tend to have, uh, the similar requirements, but they're scattered throughout the zoning districts, which tend to make life a little difficult for those folks that are trying to weigh one kind of use against another use or go for a different zoning type or whatever. It's just difficult to find, you know, what all the criteria is. If we had it in one place, if we had parking all in one place, it would be certainly easier. And so I endorse that kind of activity, certainly endorse the, uh, children's playhouse issue because it's kind of gotten out of hand. But, uh, I would also like to put on your list, if possible, this zoning district that we're grappling with tonight. And that was passed because, uh, we thought we had a project in hand and then we kind of tailored a zoning to fit that project. And unfortunately I was out of town on the day it was passed, but certainly had a lot of objections. But, uh, I, I, I would like to relook at that, especially in relation to what could happen to the McNamara gas station in the future because that may not be a building that's going to be there, you know, in the long term. And if for some reason that this project is not successful, maybe we could, you know, relook at some of that criteria. And one of the things that I thought, you know, in going back and looking at that was that the zoning setbacks that we allowed, allowed this five-foot setback from Clayton and Ballas, which is pretty unusual. And I understand the original principle, trying to get the building out front and the parking in the back. But allowing it that close, if we allowed a building that close on the caddy corner, you know, it could be a problem, I think. But I don't know. It, maybe, maybe there's some things in that special zoning district that could be relooked at and see if they're really a good idea in general and not to, to cater to a particular project like it did when it was generated. So other than that, that's, I think you're doing everything in the right direction and I think the public guides are great. You know, I, I think this is a good time for this commission.
Chairman. Mr. McKnight?
Ryan, one other thing that I would like to approach at some point, and I'm not sure that this is the right year or not, but, uh, solar shingles have come a long way since the solar plans were designed. I can now put shingles on a house that looks just like a shingle and it's actually a solar array. Our solar limitations make it so I can't put, I couldn't put those on the front of a house. And so that's where I, I think it might be time to go back and maybe make some modifications to that to allow for some of the new technology that's there and allow our residents more flexibility in that solar if it fits in to a, to a, a cleaner look. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm going to pile on, uh, Mr. Bolzina's comments and say, Ryan, our highest compliments to you for preparing this summary. I, I've had the pleasure of serving on this commission since 2003 and, um, I've not seen something like this before and I really think it's a very useful tool and I compliment you for its preparation. There are two elements about it that I'm particularly enthusiastic. One is it ties every one of your endeavors back to, or most of your endeavors, back to the comprehensive plan. And I think that makes the comprehensive plan a relevant and, and living document as opposed to a dust collector on the shelf. And I've spent enough time in corporate America to know that sometimes long-term strategic plans are just that, dust collectors. And your efforts are avoiding that. And then again, my compliments. The second is the four projects that you identified for this coming year are, I think are spot on. You've gotten a couple of additional ones to consider, but again, back to the beginning, my highest compliments for pulling this together.
Thank you.
Chairman?
Mayor Dalton?
So, um, I, I appreciate Alderman Malismiss, uh, or former Alderman Malismiss comments. And I would echo them in this respect that, that while Commissioner Bolzina and Commissioner McKnight's points are, uh, are, are very well, well-taken. They, uh, position us well going forward and that is to, to think prospectively. And, and we've always set out an objective and that is to let those interested in Town and Country know, um, what our expectations are, know what the rules. what our expectations are, know what the rules are and know how they will be treated. And they'll be treated fairly um, uh, thoroughly and, um, and consistently. I, I would just note uh, that, that I disagree with my good friend, Commissioner Bolzina in one respect. And that is that that overlay district, the service revitalization district uh, was not written associated with one project, but rather it was, it was done in my mind, kind of in, in response to that project. In other words, we knew that was a critically important intersection in our city. We knew it was underutilized at the time and that it could be something much more magnificent. But that we knew that certain uh, changes needed to be uh, adopted or, or instituted in order to maximize the potential associated with that, with that um, intersection. And so while I don't believe that, that Commissioner Bolzina meant anything by his comment, I think it's important to note that it was not written um, with, with an eye towards that particular project, but rather with an eye to the future. And I know Alderman Malins Smith will agree with me on this, or at least he better. Um, and that is that because he worked hard in this respect. And that is that we, we looked at writing an ordinance in an overlay district that best positioned that, that location for future opportunities. And that was my biggest concern tonight. And you heard my comments and they're reflected in a recorded uh, document. And that was, I was trying to help the applicant help himself to best present the case that this represents uh, a, and a value proposition to the city. It's consistent with our, with our planning and development strategy. And, and I don't, I believe that most of his remarks were, were uh, self-serving to his own business interests. And I do not fault any applicant in that regard. But what our job is, is to look at this um, uh, application and make sure it's in the best interest of the city, not just the pecuniary interests of the applicant. And that is why I appreciated Alderman Frauci's motion to continue. So that that evidence can be brought forward and we can fairly consider that evidence uh, as it, as it concerns the current overlay district and as Commissioner Bolzina suggests, what might be a modified overlay district for the future.
Further discussion? Dr. O'Mill?
Um, I don't know if we have any ordinances, probably we don't, related to charging stations. Uh, I can assure you that the electric vehicle is going to be taking things over. And I wouldn't open a new gas station anytime soon because they're going to disappear. Uh, I can tell you that charging stations have become numerous and I don't know if they affect our, our zoning or special or conditional use permits. They may be at gas stations. They may be a setup that's independent. But I can tell you, we're going to be flooded with charging stations within the next 24 months.
And to follow on that, I mean, we already have one at the Commerce Bank up there. So we're going to start seeing them pop up in lots of places. And unless we manage them, it could be, get a little weird. So.
It will be addressed in the draft. I have language towards that, yes.
And Rain Tree School has one as well, I think.
Well, I just want to kind of reiterate, uh, I, I know it's been referenced and I, I was really pleasantly surprised in this staff workup for this particular project about the reference to the comprehensive plan as has been mentioned. Because we spent a lot of time preparing that comprehensive plan. And I got to say, in the uh, almost 20 years that I've been on this commission, I've, I don't think I've seen a staff report that brought in the comprehensive plan as information for the commissioners to consider, you know, whether the uh, project was in conformance with particular points. I mean, I think the conclusory, conclusionary statement was often mentioned that it's in conformance or it's not in conformance to the comprehensive plan. But I think the way it's been laid out in the staff report was, was in a manner that the commissioners could easily refer to it and say, yeah, I understand what you, what you're saying here. And I understand we need to maybe discuss this with this particular applicant. So I think that was just great information and a good reminder for everyone that we do spend a lot of time on a comprehensive plan and we should follow it. So thank you.
Ryan, I, I too, having worked on, with you on that plan for over two years, I was excited to see that in tonight's package. So I, I think um, it's already been said, but I'll say it again. Congratulations to you. And uh, you see all these green dots on your, the stuff that's in progress and.
Used up my kudos quota for 2021.
That's it. You're getting in the house. You're not to, we're not going to, we'll, we'll talk to you again in 2022. I do have sort of a tactical question before we, uh, we move on. What, you know, I, one of the things that came up tonight was the uh, the traffic study. How's the traffic study work it in the, the COVID times, given variable?
Right.
Traffic. I don't even know how they would, if they went and did one now and started counting cars while they ate donuts or whatever, it's not going to, it doesn't reflect normal traffic. So I don't know how you do it. Maybe you can throw back to the 2015 study, but.
Yeah, I, I think that's an excellent point and I would recommend that they go back to the 2015 study and then uh, uh, extrapolate from that based on the usage that they, they expect from this facility. So yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, that's why I was kind of ambivalent on that. I didn't want them to spend a lot of money on a traffic study and put cables out across the road and do all that kind of stuff. So uh, so I'm, I would, if we can give them a suggestion, my suggestion would be just use the base points in the 2015 study and then have the engineer opine on what the effect will be from this particular facility.
Okay. Anything else on the work plan for 2021? Looks like we've got an exciting year ahead. Alderman Frauci, do you have a report from the board?
I do. Just like we have been very busy with uh, zoning amendments, the board has been uh, taking up all of the matters that you've recommended. So we just passed the compaction standards and grading and fill requirements. We also passed a substitute bill for the sign code. Uh, the substitute was brought by Ward Three Alderman Jeff Whitmire. And uh, also a substitute bill for the exterior lighting. Uh, the substitute uh, bill was brought by Ward One Alderman Pam Holman. Um, Ryan has all of those substitutes that are now uh, going forward. So if anybody wants to review uh, the new changes to the sign code or exterior lighting, um, I would certainly um, recommend that at, at some point.
I'll, I'll email them out to everybody.
Perfect.
Mr. Chairman, move to adjourn.
Wait, 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 wait. Wait, 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 wait.
Mr. Bolzina, go ahead.
Yeah. Well, what about the bill having to do with requiring two readings at the commission, at the P and D commission level?
Still being continued.
To be continued.
To be continued. Apparently continuance has come easy.
Right.
Is it because you need more information?
Yeah, I, I didn't need any more information. I didn't make any of the, the, I, I was not the proponent of the continuances.
Oh.
But um, but Pam Holman asked to have some additional information. Um, and so we continued it from our last meeting. So it'll go to the next meeting at the end of February.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate, Chairman.
Go ahead.
I, I appreciate the Alderman's comments. She's right. It, it wasn't her motion, but when an Alderman requests additional time to correspond among the board and um, and with their constituents, and if there is not a sense of urgency, I always defer in that direction. And uh, when Alderman Holman was uh, wanted to continue the conversation, I recognized that and appreciated Alderman Frauci's uh, support.
Okay.
Maybe in March I'll tell you.
Yeah. We'll try again.
We'll get it done.
Dr. O'Mill?
Move to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bye.
Aye.
I'm going to assume there's no one opposed. Motion appears to carry unanimously. All right. Thanks, everyone. We will see you. Ryan, do we have something on the docket for next month? How's it looking? Of course it says we just.
We have this.
That's a joke. We will have total access, 2.0 and uh, a, right now we have a CUP request for.